Leadership and the direction that we get from our staff, from all the employees of the town of Smyrna, thank you for a great 2024. We ask that you go with us into 2025 and continue to lead us down the path that you would have us go, Lord. We can ask for your wisdom and your knowledge, Lord, as we discuss the items on the agenda tonight. Please be with the mayor and the rest of the council as we move through the year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Bless your legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Ben. Tonight is an exciting night because we have quite a few recognitions before we move into our items for discussion. Tonight, we're going to be announcing our parade winners. We're going to have, talk a little bit about Nourish Food Bank and as well as Stewart's Creek High School video production team. So I can't remember, Chris, help me remember, how long have you all been doing the parade now?
This is year five.
So five years now. Stewart's Creek High School has helped us in getting the production of the parade out to the public, and they do an amazing job. They film the parade, they do the commentary for the parade, and I'm sure it is lots of hours prior to and afterwards that they spend in helping us do this. So at this time, if you all will come forward, please. Y'all coming up the trail. Just line up like you do in kindergarten. There you go. There you go. There you go. Nobody cut anybody else. Remember that when you were in kindergarten? They cutted me. They cutted me. That was the big thing. So we want to say thank you all for helping us with the parade. For those that can't make it out or those that choose not to, you all get to bring it right to their home. So we appreciate that. And Chris, I have a certificate for you guys, and then I have individual certificates that I'll let you hand out that are there later on. But I'm going to let you all introduce yourself. You can tell what year you are in school and if there's anything else that you'd like to say.
Hi, I'm Cade Vogel. I'm a freshman at Stewart's Creek High School, and I've really enjoyed being part of Mr. Bissinger's production program. And I highly recommend anyone who's willing or wanting to be in the industry of production to take this class. It's helped me a lot and enlightened me.
You guys have it tough, that's right.
My name is CJ Walter. I'm a junior at Stewart's Creek High School, and I want to thank Mr. B for all he's taught me throughout these years and making me become a better man.
I'm Jonas Harmon. I'm a senior at Stewart's Creek, and this was my fourth year doing the parade. And I love every moment of it, from the prep to the de-prep to actually doing it. And yeah, I got to direct it, which was a lot of fun. So, yeah.
I'm Noah Fabe. I'm a junior at Stewart's Creek High School, and I want to thank you, Mr. B, for teaching us, and I got to learn a lot from him. And this is my first year doing the parade, too. So I had a lot of experience, and it was really fun.
Hi, my name is Maggie Loop here. I'm a junior at Stewart's Creek High School, and I'm just so blessed to have all these opportunities that I've been given.
Hi, I'm Lexi Pope. I'm a junior, and I really enjoyed the parade. I've never done it before, so it was really awesome. And it's really fun to mess around with Mr. B. But until he gets mad, and then I back away. But I really enjoy. I'm in there literally all the time. So it's a great safe space.
Can you tell us a little bit about your program and a little bit about how they got chosen to participate in the parade?
That's a lot. Our program has four levels. We start in intro and go all the way to the fourth year. This group is first through fourth. We have about 120 students this year. And I didn't, they just showed up. I said, this is when the event is, and most of them knew about it already. And they said, I'll be there. And when it was originally before Thanksgiving, right after Thanksgiving, this same group said they were still going to be here. So I am blessed. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Stewart's Creek High School. And thank you, Rutherford County, for all the opportunities that we get for what we do. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Let's see. So the first group we have were the best walkers. So they were Parade entry number 25, Folklore Iala. Anyone hear from that group? Nope? Okay. So we'll make sure that we get them their certificate. Next is Best Vehicle, number 72, Local Jeeps. Nope? Okay. They always do a great job and bring a ton of people out. So Best Float was number 99, Randy Woodward. Come forward. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay. You sure should be. And tell us a little bit about you guys and maybe why you chose to be in the parade.
My wife, Susan, and myself moved here 10 years ago from downtown Nashville. We put up a front yard display every year of some sort. This year, we, you know, for the last two years, going on three years now, since we're in 2025, put up this Christmas Vacation Display, and we decided to enter the RV in the parade. We didn't know there was a contest going. Thank you so much. So we're very pleased that we're part of this. My Navy buddy, we are military, we did some deployments in the Middle East, was my cousin Eddie with the orange hose. He did a fantastic job. And so I do a lot of displays in my front yard just for holidays. Thank you. Because I lose track of my...
You're good. You're good.
So we did have a good time. We like presenting a little bit of comedy and humor and bringing a little bit to Smyrna, and we appreciate this very much.
Thank you. Well, we're going to get a quick picture. Ms. Heather's going to take a quick picture.
By the way.
Thank you all so much. We really appreciate y'all's participation. Okay, our last one was the Mayor's Cup, and it was number 59, BH Holmes. Nobody wants to talk. Everybody's trying to get everybody else to be first. Oh, there you go. Congratulations. We are so excited. And so tell us a little bit about you guys and why you might have chosen to enter.
Well, I'm Sandra Holmes, President of the company. This is all the, mainly the girls that work in my office, and Donnie, my nephew. He runs the shop out there.
He works as hard as any of them.
More so. And actually, we started doing work for y'all, doing water. So we really appreciate that. We love working with y'all. And we decided this year that, hey, let's put something together and let's get into the parade. So that's what we do.
Perfect. Well, I'm going to let you all each introduce yourself. So I'll let you pass it down. Rhonda McLean.
I'm Shawna Holmes-Altizer.
Cindy Holmes.
I'm Jamie Jones-Winderow.
Brandy Brown.
Donnie Altizer.
Well, we just want to say thank you all so much for participating. We had more floats this year than we have ever had in the past. And so it's because of individuals like you all that we can put on a wonderful parade for the citizens of our community. And I don't think I have ever seen as many spectators come out to enjoy the Christmas parade as we did this year. And I will tell everyone that is a parade participant, ration your candy, because it seems to never last till the end. So, yeah. So thank you all so much. Jamie, it's good to see you. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. So one of the things that a couple of years ago, we decided that we wanted to do was we wanted to find a way as a community to give back during our Christmas parade. And we knew we had a captive audience, and the spectators that were coming to the parade, as well as those that were coming to participate. So we decided that we would do a food drive during our Christmas parade, and we would ask those that were participating to bring canned goods, and those that are along the parade route to bring canned goods. And our employees have built floats, and they will push carts down, and they will pick up those things along the parade route. Well, this year, items from admin, we collected 1,072 items. 7,032 were collected along the parade route, and we actually received $8,150 in monetary donations to give back as well. And our fire department during their can drive collected 18,985 items. So the town of Smyrna put in 27,089 non-perishable donated items for 2024. And today, Norman Hanks is here to talk a little bit about Nourish Food Bank. So I'm going to let you come right there. Is that okay? To talk a little bit about the food bank.
Mary Esther, you got nourish is 40 years, 40-plus years strong now. We've been partnering with Smyrna the past five or six years for this food drive, and we are always so grateful to receive it. This past year, we served 1,075,000 meals to our neighbors all across Rutherford County. You know, we work really hard to make sure that no one goes hungry. Our goal is always to make sure no one goes hungry and to work ourselves out of jobs. Unfortunately, that's not happening this year. But we are super excited to be able to always receive the support that we get from the town of Smyrna. None of our other cities support us the way that you all do, and we are so proud to be a part of Smyrna's community.
Well, we really appreciate it. I think all of us probably in this room are so blessed. It's hard to imagine going to bed at night hungry. I can tell you, as a former teacher, there were kids in my classroom that would come and say, I'm hungry. And it wasn't because they'd not had breakfast that morning. It was because they had not had a meal since they left school the day before. That's right. And so the service you all provide to our citizens is something that we are so grateful for what you all do. So we appreciate you. We hope next year that we'll have even more. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a great meeting.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we will move into our items for discussion. All of you that were parade winners are welcome to stay if you'd like to, but if you choose not to, you are more than welcome to go. But we do hope you'll participate again next year. Uh huh. So our first item is public comments. The town's public comment period shall be reserved for those citizens that have signed up to address the town council or board or committee at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting pursuant to our town's public comment policy, and speakers are limited to three minutes, but additional comments may be submitted in writing. Amber, did we have any public comments tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item two, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Rockwell Automation for the procurement of software consulting and training to support the work order inventory and maintenance processes for the multiple town departments. Hey, Carl.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This request is for approval to procure the software services and for a computerized maintenance management system from Rockwell Automation. It's going to serve the following departments: Public Works, Building and Grounds, Streets, Stormwater, Vehicle Maintenance, Parks, Water Treatment Plan, and Wastewater Treatment Plan. Information Services partnered with the departments to identify and review potential solutions. And based on the functionality and an extensive pilot by the Water Treatment Plant, the departments unanimously selected the Rockwell solution. It's going to have a year one cost of $46,728, which includes software configuration assistance and training. The annual recurring cost will be about $31,680. The system will replace two current systems that we have that will defer this new cost by an additional $10,578. And I've worked with the respective directors to ensure that we have funding for this year, and then we will be budgeted for the following years.
Okay. Questions for Carl on this?
So this was introduced so that it can integrate the different departments so that they can work better together?
The departments will all have their own separate instance, but it will have some integration between the departments. So if Department A needs a part, Department B doesn't have one, you know, or they have one, they can, you know, find that in the inventory.
And it, does it, and they can all see where they are in the process on this particular software?
Yes. Yeah, it has a, has a number of different functions that it serves, and they can all have great visibility with that. It has extensive reporting with it as well.
Awesome. Other questions for, other questions for Carl?
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Carl. We'll move on to item two, or item three, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Sessions Paving Company for the construction of the Washington Street and CSX project. Do you believe it?
I know it. Finally. Thanks to Mr. Peach and all the staff in legal for getting the easements worked out with CSX. Like I said, TDOT has reviewed the bid from Sessions, and they have approved it, and also excellent coming to our CEI. So we're fortunate that this is a railroad, railway highway crossing program, Section 130 funding. So federal highways will be paying 90% with a 10% local match.
Okay. The council understands exactly what we're talking about doing, but just for the public, can you explain a little bit about what this is going to be?
What this will do will be adding the sidewalks, be the main part of it from Front Street over to Lowry to go across the railroad tracks to give that pedestrian crossing there. As many have seen in the last couple of years, that CSX Railroad, we did release that construction funding early so they could get the pad gates in. So all that work has already been done on their part. And we'll also be doing some work on the roundabout. We'll be putting a small two-inch curb up around the roundabout to keep vehicles more in the traffic lanes instead of cutting close to the roundabout and making it harder to distinguish if people are turning or going on through the roundabout.
I did have one of the bus drivers ask me about that, that they said it's already kind of tight there to get around in a bus.
Right. Well, like I said, it'll just have a two-inch curb, so they will be able to roll up on it with no problem. So that is, it was called a truck apron, as you can also see out on the new one at Jeanne Lane or on Nolan Drive, that you have those that you can roll up on them. But if you're in a vehicle, it's enough there that you will want to stay in your lane and not try to shortcut through the roundabout.
Questions for Charles on this?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Sessions Paving is doing the project, Charles.
Yes.
Are they using any subcontractors?
They'll be using the sub for their concrete work, and then they'll be using the sub for the pavement markings.
Do you know who that is?
Probably not yet. When we get to the pre-construction meeting, we'll get those subs, but they will be subbing that work out.
If I may. So one of the subcontractors who we previously had an issue on, on a project, will not be part of this project because the, that type of work is not included in this, in this job. This will be pretty quick in and out, but I think I understand what you mean by that, council member. So, yeah, that particular work is not included nor that sub.
Okay. But I'm comfortable with Sessions, like I said, worked with, and they're forming. So I'm very comfortable with working with them on this project.
So I guess I'm not as comfortable with understanding what you're talking about. So what is it?
We had a subcontractor that works under Sessions consistently, and there's been several departments with the town that's had issues with them. And matter of fact...
With an individual or with that company themselves?
That company and their work.
Okay.
And their personnel. And then the, they originally did work on the second redesign of the whole front street, and there was a few issues there as well.
Okay.
So I spoke with, I spoke with Dave about it, and I think Dave followed up on it.
Right. Yeah, they're mainly, like I said, this will not have the larger, especially any major utilities like we've had in the past with any water, sewer, storm, or any type of that work. So we won't have that sub on the project.
So let's talk a little bit about this. If we've had issues with that, what is, can we ask for that sub not to be on our projects?
We, we have, we've done that on another one, like on Spring Hill, we did bypass Sessions because they insisted on using that sub. So we did go to the number two.
Was it the things that, go ahead.
Sorry. Is this the same contractor that, when we were doing Front Street, that kind of stalled the paving and everything kind of stalled there for several months?
It wasn't on that. They did Lowry Street.
They did Lowry.
They did Lowry Street. Sessions...
What did I just say? I meant Lowry.
Lowry Street. Yeah, they did do Lowry Street. So, yeah, that was the...
It's the same one. Okay.
Right. But on that one, we didn't have a choice since it was a TDOT local manage, and also this one's also a TDOT grant funded. So we go by the TDOT guidelines.
So if it's a TDOT project, we don't have a say in who the subcontractors might be? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
But in this case, it's not that sub just because they don't have this type of work?
Just because their type of work is not needed on this project. There's not any utility work to be done on this project.
One of the things that I also, I asked that question to Dave, too, and one of the things I thought or wanted to find out is if there was a way we could put in the contract language to ensure that if there is a stall, that they are liable for whatever, whatever reasoning causes it. So that we're not, we don't continue to be held up, and if somebody has to replace them, I don't know if that's possible since it's a TDOT contract. But I wanted to ensure that if that was an issue for us, that we had addressed it in our contract.
Right. Well, we have the, you know, the days, you know, for the contract, and then goes into liquidated damages. So we would move into that if the project stalls. It's 183 days, which is about six months. It's really, can be done in three, but just working with the railroad, and we just see delays there. And if you make too tight a schedule, you up the price. But being the unknown is scheduling the CSX flagman for when you need them. There could be, you know, delays in that. But there's not going to be any large open cuts or anything of that nature in this project.
Okay.
What I remember about the Lowry project, though, was even though we had some of those liquidated damages conversations in the contract, there's obviously stipulations like weather, et cetera, that don't get counted. And if I remember right, what they, they pretty much counted every day that it rained or there was some reason why they couldn't work. And when they added all those back, they were okay in the calendar, right? Which they even ended up working on some of those days, they counted as non-work days. But that's the rules.
They approved.
Right. So that's what I, that's what I remember on that one, because I had the same conversation with Brian at the time about what can we do to make them come back to work? Because they basically were just saying, we'll get to you when we get to you. And essentially, they were still within their number of days.
They were within their contract window. Yes.
It's a good question, but I'm glad you've remedied it.
Well, that one was, like I said, that was a tough project just due to the location and the nature of the traffic control that TDOT imposed on us.
Well, probably a lot, lot like this one. It was probably, you know, let's just say 180-day project. It really is only a 90-day project. They worked real hard at the beginning, kind of every day, and then they didn't do anything for about 60 or 75 days. So it looked like nothing was happening. And they, yeah, they went off to another project, and it looked like nothing was happening, which it wasn't. But they were still well within their window.
Yeah, as long as within their contract period.
So unfortunately, that can happen when you have these projects.
Well, I said, you don't want to make your time schedule too tight, because if they do that, then the prices will go up. And like I said, it's just so many unknowns, especially in this one with involving the railroad and working with them and their rules and regulations about being within working distance of the track.
Yeah. And of course, we always get caught in, some of these projects are relatively small in the grand scheme of things, and we're talking about larger TDOT.
Right.
Contractors who may have a job to pave, you know, 40 miles of I-40 at the same time or whatever. So it kind of gets shuffled around.
It's getting tougher to, like I said, get contractors. Like I said, it's a lot of work going on out there, and it's hard, working hard to get contractors to bid on our projects.
Yeah. I guess the only other thing we could do is 100% instead of a 90-10 split, right? When we're only paying 10%, we get about 10% of the control.
Exactly.
Okay. We will move on. Do we have some parade winners who were late? See what we're going to do. We're going to, we're going to switch a little bit somewhere a little bit late. And so I want to make sure that we recognize them, and then we'll get back to item number four. Hi, how are you guys? Come on in. So tell us which group you guys are with. Come on in.
We're with the dance group Folclor Iali that was in the parade.
You all did a great job, and you all were our best walkers for the parade. And so we have a presentation for y'all. So y'all come on in, because we want to make sure we get everybody on TV. So, oh, yeah, you're on TV. You're on TV. Oh, wait, where'd you go? So I'm going to let you introduce yourself, and if you want to tell what school that you attend, you can also do that. Is that okay?
Sure. Okay. Do you want us to like, name?
Sure, yeah.
My name's Paulina. I'm one of the teachers for our dance group. And I am going to University at Cumberland University in Lebanon.
Hi, I'm Ashley Vescas. I'm also one of the teachers of the dance group, and I'm just currently working out of school.
Hi, my name's Alaria, and I'm actually going to Smyrna High School here. So, yeah.
Hi, I'm Jenny Lopez, and I go to McGavitt High School.
Duster nine.
Hi, I'm Jalen Sanchez.
Do you attend school?
Yes.
And where at?
Interpreet College Prep.
Very good.
Hi, I'm Eric Olmos Lopez, and I attend to school at Strive College Academy.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Hernandez-Puritas. Smyrna High School.
So can you, since you're one of the teachers, can you tell us a little bit about your group?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So the group's name is Folclor Iali, right? And Iali is actually a Nahuatl word
that means, in Spanish, it means corazón de tierra. And I guess the closest translation would be like heart of the earth or heart of the land, something along those lines. And we chose that name to like symbolize the connection to our heritage and our roots, our Hispanic, well, specifically our Mexican roots. We are a Mexican folklore dance group based in Nashville. And, yeah, that's the Mexican...
Well, you can see the picture. They did an amazing job, and they danced and walked the entire way. So we would like to get a picture, if that's okay. So if we kind of get close together. So Ms. Heather, can we get a picture? Thanks, you guys. We appreciate you all being here. Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing us to recognize them. So item four is, anything else on item three that anybody had? Okay, then item four is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Hayworth Meyer-Boland Professional Engineers LLC for construction engineering and inspection for the Washington Street at CSX project.
Right. This goes along with... Right, this goes along with a construction project, they had been approved by TDOT, they're a pre-approved firm. They're also, they're formerly Wiser, HMB has taken over Wiser out of Murfreesboro, so they are pre-approved, so that's why we went with them, and TDOT did approve their contract.
Okay, questions on this? Okay, then we'll move on to item five, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Hayworth Meyer Bowlin Professional Engineers LLC for the right-of-way survey and roadway design for the Amabel Road project.
Mayor, on this one, we are currently in functional and preliminary design, we've done the survey of the entire route, which is like one point six miles. And we're looking at making it a three-lane section with sidewalks, like I said, but until we get into final design from our functionals, we'll know better what we're doing. This contract here is mainly getting it in place, so I can budget for next fiscal year, just to know what the contracting price would be.
Questions on this project?
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a few comments.
Sure.
Charles, maybe explain where this is, I think a lot of people is getting it confused with Amabel Road.
Right.
On the west side of the street.
Well, this will run from Old Nashville Highway out to Lee Victory Parkway.
Okay.
Like I said, currently, it's a two-lane road with very little shoulders, we have pedestrians that are using the road at some time, and they're just having to walk in the road because there is nowhere else to go, shoulders or anything. So that's the need, this project, I believe, was designed, what, back two thousand eight or something? Councilman Dempsey, I believe, you know, worked on that, so it's been the need out there, so we're looking back at it for vehicle, because we've reached that ten thousand ADT, traffic volume on the route, and plus for pedestrian safety.
So that, that was some follow-up questions, this was designed once.
Yes.
You know, back, I think James Yates was pushing the project. And so there was water line upgrade that was included in it as well, and I was wondering if the water line upgrade's going to be included.
You know, have we just had anything from utilities?
Okay, you might, might want to check with them.
Okay.
And, and then the other thing, are we trying to use anything from that old design?
I contacted Ryan, and he could not find any part of that, because I know you mentioned about the cemetery there, that, any of that in the, HMB, they are aware of it, that did show up on their survey.
So.
But nothing, but he could not find anything from the previous project.
So that old cemetery there, I think, was associated with the old Sam Davis Farm or that area. But I read their contract, and any archaeological work would be additional services. So we need to keep that in mind with cemetery. And then also, they mentioned additional services would be retaining wall design. And there's probably going to be a few cuts in there that require a retaining wall.
Right, we get further into that, we'll be seeing, but like I said, usually on a cemetery, that's something you avoid just because of the expense and things, so.
Right, I was just trying to get you to negotiate that cost upfront, rather than on the back end.
Like I said, until we get the functionals done and get a better idea if we're going to have any grade changes that facilitate that, we'll try to keep on existing grade, just because we have so many driveways that connect into it, that if we change grade any, we're really going to change driveway profiles. But our next thing will be looking at early coordination with the utilities, and just seeing where our right-of-way lines are in utilities, and then, I think Mr., you know, our town manager said that we're going to go out, and like I said, we may have a public hearing on this to bring residents in to get their input once we get some functionals down.
My last question is, and how did we prioritize this roadway versus others?
Well, like I said, it was something that was all the way back to, what, two thousand eight, that we saw the need for it, but just when it hit that ten thousand ADT threshold, that moved it up, that you're moving into a three-lane section when you hit that ADT threshold. And plus just the pedestrian need there for safety.
Okay.
So you were saying something, Councilman Dempsey, about the additional, additional services for retaining walls?
Yes.
Can you explain that?
In, in the contract, they list, they.
Oh, I know additional services, but where do you see that happening?
I'm thinking right across from the public shopping center. There's some high grades on the right-hand side.
Right.
And that little strip center in the public shopping center on the left-hand side already has retaining walls, so if we push it out to the right, you're going to have some retaining walls for those existing houses there.
Right.
So that, that was.
And then, like I said, we may get into somewhere where we had to modify our typical sections, you know, we may have to come back, you know, when it gets to some of that stuff, maybe just have to avoid it, come into a two-lane, or how you bring your sidewalk in, that area may not have sidewalks on both sides, that's something that once we get into our constraints, that we'll work those details out.
Thanks, Charles.
Okay.
And you kind of talked about prioritization, and that's usually done through the budget process, staff will bring forward to Dave what they feel that priorities are, and then we, as a council, look at it at budget retreat, which and then we discuss whether that's the priority that we see in, as a group.
Yeah, so, so at budget time, is everyone, or we just, is it just staff that presents priority items? Or is it council and, and Dave?
We, I mean, in the, Dave's obviously not been through budget before, so this will be his first budget here. But there are ones that we've in the past said that individual council members have maybe called the town manager and said, we want this to be looked at as a possible priority. And then they look at it, and then it's brought to us at the council retreat, and then we go over them at that point, so.
Yeah, I just didn't understand the methodology.
Yeah.
But there aren't, everybody's, the staff is there presenting, we're all there together.
Yeah.
But the actual budget hearings that are done, that are starting, have they already started or getting ready to start here soon? That's done with staff and department heads individually, and council is not involved in that process. Okay, item six is approval of the, oh, sorry, any other questions for Charles on this? Okay, item six is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Rogers Group Incorporated for the construction of the right lane addition of State Route 102, the Nissan Drive project, Charles?
Right, Mayor, on council, on this, we're adding a right turn lane on Nissan, that will be in front of Gills. That will go on to the new section of Jefferson Pike that's under construction now. This project, like I said, is totally locally funded on this part of it.
Comments or questions on this one?
Just, just, just to follow up, that's going to be the right-hand turn lane. When will the additional intersection and the turn lanes on to Jefferson Pike from the opposite direction?
Okay, well, back in July of two thousand one, I put in for a CMAC, which is the Carbon Reduction Mitigation Fund. Put in for that, was not approved in twenty-two, they did not open them back up in twenty-three. But in twenty-four, I was able to get a carbon reduction program grant for a million dollars, which in their thinking, left turn lanes qualify for carbon reductions, but right turn lanes don't. So I had to pull the right turn lane, I had a choice.
Why is that?
Yeah, I could submit it.
Because it's the government.
It's.
I'm learning.
Yeah, well, like I said, I could, I could submit it with the left turn lane signal improvements and the right turn lane, and they would not accept it. Pulling the right turn lane out, they accepted the, and I was able to get the grant.
We're grateful for any grant we get.
But yeah.
Did you see how frustrating, I mean, how, I mean, how crazy is that, that one, one way would get it and one way wouldn't, so.
But, yeah, that's the, and like I said, well, that was the same thing at Old Nashville and Sam Riddle, we almost, they almost pulled the funding on it because they said we were widening and adding a right turn lane, so almost, they were almost pulled the funding on it. But this one, like I said, I have done the initiation of it in the TDOT portable portal. I've gotten the PIN number, but right now, I'm just waiting for them to set the schedule and give me the notice to proceed for NEPA and preliminary engineering.
So maybe it's right turn, leaning right, and left turn, depending on the administration.
Now, this has been, well, it was back in the CMAC, but it was, it was just odd, that's that, I don't know if they fill that right turn, that you can right turn on red, that you can keep free flowing, and you're not sitting as long and idling, which is one of the big things in the application process. So I don't know if that's fair.
Thanks, Charles.
That's why they explained it to me.
Charles, just to confirm, when it merges on to Jefferson Pike, it's going to merge on to the existing road, there's not going to be an additional cut?
No, no, there'll be two lanes, like I said, the lane that be coming in, so it will be that. Then when we do the double left, when that project comes under design, then it'll be two lanes there that we'll come into.
Thanks.
So you got thirteen days to get your left lane approved before the right takes office.
That's right.
Well, like I said, right, right now, once I get the notice received, it'll probably be about a year in design, a year in right-of-way, and then a year for construction, that's, that's the way that the grant was written, to break it up in three-year funding.
Okay, so don't expect this next week.
No, ma'am.
Got it. Okay, item seven is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Pyro Shows relative to the town's annual fireworks show for two thousand twenty-five. Dave?
Yep, so this is a, this, the same firm who, who we used in the past, it's the same cost. And we relatively have, have the same show, so if there's any additional questions, myself or Mr. Spearmint are happy to address them, but I know you're familiar with this contract and the show itself, so.
Pyro Shows always does a great job on our fireworks, and Dave, I know you've not gotten to see one yet, but this is probably our largest event that we have in the town, it is amazing how many people show up for this one, so. Okay, item eight is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the annual service agreement with Aria Filtra Service for the membrane filtration system at the water treatment plant. Mike?
Yes, ma'am, this is the annual maintenance and phone support contract for the pole membrane system at the water plant. This cost did increase slightly, the existing contracts were ninety-seven oh seven, and the new contract will be for ten thousand and sixty-six.
Questions on this system? Okay, item nine is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement for locating services with USIC.
And Mike, before you, before you get into the actual what this contract is, I just want to put a disclaimer out there, we're still in contract negotiations with USIC. And if, if those negotiations do fail, we do have another bidder who's slightly more expensive. That would be on the agenda for, for the council, same service, just, just when we put this out to bid. You know, we had a couple bidders, three, I think, in total, one dropped out, so we were down to two, this is the low bid. But if we're not successful with those contract negotiations, we will be going to the next one.
Was it, is this who we currently have?
It is.
Yeah, and how, we started this how long ago?
Um, three years ago, we did the original contract, and then we extended it to one-year periods, so we had to bid it out again this year, and they, like Mr. Santucci said, they had quite a bit of exceptions that we're trying to work through.
Well, I know it really freed up a lot of our time.
It has, and especially during the Google Fiber days, there's no way we could have done it and kept up in house.
Questions on this?
Yeah, just one quick question, so survey and mapping, is that the one, the company that pulled out? The nine hundred thousand dollar bid?
They put the bid, but we pulled them out because they were double what everybody else was.
So if USIC falls, then we're looking AccuMark, is that who we're talking about?
Correct, Benchmark AccuMark, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item ten, which is consideration authorization of a list of items to be auctioned through online surplus sale with GovDeals. Hi, Sierra.
Hi, good evening. Okay, so I believe you have the list of items that we are requesting to be declared as surplus. The list does include some town vehicles that have been removed from service. The town seeks permission to conduct an online auction through GovDeals.
Questions on any of this?
I've just got a general question, is anyone allowed to bid on those items?
Yes.
Town employees?
Yes, anyone's allowed to bid.
Town council?
Yeah, anyone's allowed to bid, they have to go through GovDeals.
Okay. A truck, a Ford, was seventy-seven thousand.
What do you have your eye on? Don't tell what you're going to look for.
Just don't bid on the good you bid.
Hey, if somebody could tell me what he's bidding on, I'll run the prices.
Okay, we'll move on to item eleven, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the town's Smyrna sign ordinance, chapter six, permitted signs in non-residential districts, section A, signs other than billboards and interstate signs.
Uh, yes, ma'am, this adds a little bit of language just to clarify the ordinance, it really doesn't change anything. There was an argument made, an issue where the lighting was around a sign, and they just simply take it down, and now they're in compliance where that's not the intention. So if, I just added the language irrespective of the presence or absence of a sign, so it's clear.
So is this the example?
Correct.
Okay. Because we don't allow the illuminated windows and all that in like all the vape stores and all that, is that correct?
You know, I don't know all the ins and outs of the, the lighting ordinance, to be honest with you, but I don't know if Mr. Spearmint knows.
Yeah, so what this, what this looks to accomplish is, is again, just a clarification where the language wasn't as clear as the, as really what we intended to, so we need to update that, but as kind of lighting technology has changed a little bit, and you see those LED strips and those sorts of things, people are getting a little bit more creative with what they're doing those with, and and this will address that.
And may, maybe you guys have looked at this, but this picture is a perfect example, the bright lights on the roof that are kind of facing towards the road, there's a couple of buildings that I've seen pop up around town that have added those. And I know that codes gave them a visit, and I'm not sure that there was any specific language that talked about it, but we probably need to look at that, I could tell you, if you drive down Enon Springs Road at night, there are two buildings kind of across the street from each other, and when you get between the two, you feel like you're getting baked, and the, the lights are shining straight towards the road, there's, there's got to be some sort of filtering or light, light dilution or something that we can look at.
So we'll, we'll, we'll take a stab at that from a code perspective first, and then if, if we don't have the code that exists, we'll, we'll look at what we may need to do.
Yeah, that, yeah, I think we don't, I think that's what Todd, you and I talked about it, so I believe that was where we were, was there really wasn't anything that it was violating, but if we're going to be making changes to the ordinance, we might want to consider what we might be able to do here to fix that, too.
We'll take a look and see what we can do to accomplish that.
Questions on this specific thing, because I've got another thing also I want to bring up?
Oh, a lot of site planning we do, we do, we talk about candle power, we talk about shadow boxing, and all those things that might help eliminate some of those problems.
Yeah, I think both of these businesses were existing businesses that just changed hands. And so probably didn't get a full site plan review and all of that, because they just basically.
I think some of it's for safety, but some of it goes a little overboard.
I'm all for lighting your parking lot, but you don't, you know, you can't blind drivers in the process.
Or residents.
Or residents.
Something I've noticed a lot of lately, and I think a lot of this is for security for our police department, but I think that there is something in our codes that they are not allowed to totally block all of the windows to where they're totally blacked out. Does anybody know if that's accurate? I've just noticed, will you come forward, just so you're on the mic, I've just noticed a lot lately, and you know how it's, you notice it one place, and then you start looking and you see it all over?
Currently, we don't have a code that says that they have to have a particular, I know what you're talking about, because you know, there is, it's a safety.
Right.
Thing, you know, if there's, say, robbery going on, you can't see inside the business.
Right.
We do not have a code at this time, but that will be something that we're going to be looking at.
Because I remember there was something at one time, remember?
There is for liquor stores already.
There's something that.
Three foot and above.
Three foot, no, I knew there was something, because we had, it was like for liquor stores, vape stores, is where we were having the big issues.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll look into that.
Mayor, I've got a comment on that, that, you know, I'm thinking one instance, a photography studio over by the donut shop that had all the windows blacked out. So I guess we've got to be careful, you know, and make sure we don't exclude, you know, any business like that from doing that.
There is a limit on how much signage you can have.
Right.
So that is, that we can address that, but, but. So, that is that we can address that, but, but as far as just blacking out the windows, there's, there's just not anything at this point, so.
And mainly for safety of our law enforcement, if there's an issue and they're having to go in or whatever, so. Okay, perfect, thanks. Okay, we'll move on to item twelve, which is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map fifty-four, parcel eighteen point zero zero. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the plan of services. It's for the annexation. It's the next item on your agenda. This was just put in writing, the services that the town would be providing, which would be, in this case, all services except for water, which would be provided by CUD. The planning commission did hold a public hearing, did review this plan of services, and did recommend approval.
Questions on the plan of services for this item?
I've just got a couple of general questions. Where is the sewer connected on this, Kevin, and, and I guess where does the sewer go to? And then we've received a letter from CUD indicating they meet the fire flows and pressures at the higher elevations.
Yeah, the sewer, there's a couple connections. They're actually going to connect, there's a sewer stub, kind of the, the development is kind of to the southeast there. Here's a sewer line stub to the property line there that they would extend from, as well as the courtyard is to a creek development, which is, there would be a road connection there, as well as the sewer connection there. So, they've connected the sewer at a couple spots. CUD did provide a will serve letter that they can provide fire flow and domestic supply up to elevation of seven hundred and sixty feet. And above that seven hundred.
That's basically where the red line is drawn, the dash line.
That is correct.
Thank, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item thirteen, which is the consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map fifty-four, parcel eighteen point zero zero, requested by Jared Cunningham with Catalyst Design Group on behalf of the Rose C. Neal Revocable Trust containing twenty-nine point seventy-nine acres. The property is located on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, and this is a second reading.
Yeah, this is a, one that was the fertile first reading, and between the, the two first readings, votes, there was some changes made. But this, what has been requested is for, the revisions was eighty-three single-family lots on twenty-nine point seventy-nine acres. So, that's an overall density of two point seven nine per acre. The original cemental had eighty-five lots, so it was a slight reduction from eighty-five to eighty-three. And the changes that were made, the lot dimensions were revised, which basically creates, all the lots are seven thousand and nine thousand minimum. The actual breakdown based on what they have shown is about, about fifty-five of the lots are seven thousand, twenty-four nine, and there's about four that are eleven thousand square foot lots. The lot sizes do a, but the lots of budding, Saddle Grove, which is owned R three, are all at least nine thousand square feet. So, this was somewhat in, trying to, to at least in a, partially comply with our new PRD requirements. The house sizes would range from twenty-four hundred to thirty-five hundred square feet, which the original request was sixteen to thirty-five hundred, so it was an increase in the minimum size. They would be finished with brick, stone, and concrete siding, with added requirement that any rear-facing elevation fronting, facing Rocky Fork Ambleville Road would be entirely brick. Again, access is shown from Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, as well as the connection to Step Street and the courtyard is to a creek development. And all requirements of the town regarding step backs, parking, and open space would be met. Proposed amenities include walking trails, a covered gazebo, succeeding areas, and a tot lot playground area. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval.
Comments, questions?
Couple comments. Kevin, the density is basically the gross density, and it doesn't subtract the, the unusable land, correct?
That's what I have in there.
So, it doesn't include the very upper hilltop, the detention basins, or any of that, correct?
No, I think the, the growth, the density of the two point seven nine per acre is the total, that's the density.
Yeah, but that's not the net density.
That's the gross density, yes, sir.
Right, the gross density includes everything, but the net density, we, we don't know what it, what it is.
Well, I, I did look at that. It's about a little, it's four point one four units per acre on the actual developed site, not, not counting the open space.
And that, that's what I'm trying to get to, is when we look at these, if we could some way look at that net density as well, to give us a true, you said it was four point one?
Four point one four.
Four?
Yeah, you have, it's twenty-nine point seventy-nine acres, and there's nine point seven two acres that's open space, so you subtract the nine point seven two out, you get down to just over twenty acres, so.
And then, are they, are they doing any roadway improvements to Rocky Fork?
Uh, they're, they're not showing any, other than dedication of right of way, there would not be any improvements that they were proposing.
And then the hilltop areas not, there's no walking trails or anything to it to utilize that?
They're not showing any connection to that. I mean, there's open space areas that would be, there's potential for that, but the open space connecting from the front to the back, but they're not showing.
Will this site plan come in after the rezoning to maybe discuss some of those?
We can certainly do that, yeah. There'll be, if this is approved, that would be, their next step would be to submit subdivision plats for planning commission.
Okay. Kevin, even though that's not our requirement from the developers, can you just make sure with the projects that you have that figure ready?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, item fourteen, consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-seven relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map fifty-four, parcel eighteen point zero zero. We'll put that on the agenda. And move on to item fifteen, which is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map fifty J, Group E, parcel fifteen point zero zero. Kevin?
Yes, this is the plan of services for the annexation there on Neal Avenue. This would, again, put in writing the, the services that the town would be providing upon annexation, which would be all services, again, in this case, except for water, which would be provided by CUD. The planning commission did hold a public hearing, review this plan of services, and did recommend approval.
Question on the plan of services for this project? Okay, item sixteen for this project is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R three zoning of property on Tax Map fifty J, Group E, parcel fifteen point zero zero, requested by Proverbs Build Homes containing eighty-nine one hundredths of an acre. The property is located at one thirty-nine Neal Avenue and is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is an annexation request for one tract of land on, at one thirty-nine Neal Avenue. It's about twenty-five hundred feet north of the intersection with Ambleville Road. It's about two hundred and fifty feet south of the intersection with Cloverland Drive. The land use plan would support medium-density, single-family development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of the Belmont PRD and I two in town and RM in Rutherford County. CUD has indicated that they can meet fire flow requirements in this area. In addition to the annexation of this property, the planning commission did recommend annexation of approximately two hundred and forty linear feet of the existing right of way of Neal Avenue in front of this parcel. That was per staff's recommendation. There is an existing house located on this property. The planning commission did review this request and did recommend approval.
Questions on this one? We had.
Just a couple of general questions. Will that, will that house remain, Kevin?
Uh, it's my understanding that they are planning to keep that existing house. There's nothing prohibiting them from removing it, but I believe that, my understanding, I mean, I know when I was out there, put up the sign initially, they were actually working on it and doing some renovations to it.
Do you know how many units they're going to try to put on this?
If, assuming they keep the existing house, the existing road frontage, there could only really be one more lot created.
Okay.
Uh, there's, there is enough road frontage there that you could end up with three if they tore that existing house down, but that would be the absolute maximum.
I know we discussed last time about that buffer that was between the industrial development, and that maybe Belmont had that buffer along their property line. Is that going to be a requirement?
Yeah, Belmont, it was required within the Belmont PRD, because they, they actually came after the industrial development. So, this would be the same similar situation. They would, there is a pretty, a pretty good buffer there already that, if my memory is right, that the industrial park actually put in, because they came, they were, the industrial park was, these houses were already there when the industrial park was built, and so I think that may have been put there. There's a pretty good buffer there already. So, we would look at that when the plaque comes in, but they would be, we would look at that, but, but a buffer would be, were a requirement, because residential to industrial, so.
That's it.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item seventeen, which is our housekeeping item of consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance twenty-five dash two relative to the annexation and R three zoning of property located on Tax Map fifty J, Group E, parcel fifteen. Item eighteen is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map twenty-eight, parcel thirty-four point zero zero, to go from R four to PRD. It's requested by Abu Ishaik. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately four point three two acres and is located at six oh eight Rock Springs Road, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request. This is a tract of land. It is within the town. There's a couple houses on the property already. That's why there's two addresses. They each have a separate address there. Land use plan would support medium-density residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R four, as well as the PRD, which is the Spring Branch Townhomes PRD, which is to the east and north of this property. Those two existing houses I mentioned, would be, would be removed if this development is approved. This proposed PRD is for a mix of ten single-family houses, as well as thirteen townhomes, so a total of twenty-three houses. It's four point three two acres, so it's about five point three two houses per acre. Minimum house size would be fifteen hundred square feet with a two-car garage. They would be finished with a mix of brick and concrete siding. One access point is shown to Rock Springs Road with all units accessing that internal private street. All houses would be sold via horizontal property regime with the HOA owning and maintaining all common areas. A type C buffer is shown along the western property line abiding the existing single-family houses. Adequate parking is provided, and the proposed amenities they have shown were a dog park and a playground. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval with a couple of conditions. The existing tree canopy is required to be preserved as much as possible in that landscape buffer area, with landscaping being added as necessary to be compliant with the type C buffer requirements. The facades, and number two, the facades of the buildings which have direct visibility from Rock Springs Road are required to have additional brick added to include a minimum of the entirety of the first floor. We did receive, after the discussion, this on first reading, we did receive revised PRD book, and that is in, what is in your packet, is the revised book. There were some changes there, one, some wording just about that buffer area and preservation of the existing landscaping wherever possible there, as well as some revised architectural elevations, which do show some additional brick on those elevations, again, where they're visible from, Rock Springs Road, as well as, you know, some, the rear of the units, they add some dormers on some of the units and things of that nature, recess some of the front doors, the entry landings, to try to break, break it up. So, there are some differences there to what you saw with the raw and first reading, so. I believe that's all I got.
Questions on this one? I know there were some real concerns on this one with it already being R four and what would be allowed in R four.
It would be similar. I mean, you would have, single-family homes certainly could be built here, as well as duplexes. You wouldn't have, there's some three- and four-unit townhomes, that's what they're proposing. You couldn't have those, but you could have duplexes in R four.
I think we're getting some encouraging matchups, because you've got residential backing up to residential, single-family, and on the opposite side, all that could have been duplex R four zone. And with what they've laid out here, it will back up both sides to a similar product, so you won't have a bunch of duplexes backing up to single-family or whatever. It's a, it's kind of an upzone in a way, because it's a win, I think, that we're not going to get just a bunch of duplexes there, and we're going to have single-family residential in its place. Kevin, the fifteen hundred does include the garage, is that correct?
That's correct.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mark, you'd brought up something last meeting about the house sizes along Mason Tucker, so I went and looked that up, and I think it was, they ranged anywhere from twelve fifty.
Yeah, they're.
There was a few of them up there, twenty-four fifty.
Yeah.
So, they may have been a two-story or something.
Yeah, those are old, Waldron built a lot of those years ago.
It's five-e, Johnson.
It's five-e built several of those along through there, yeah.
The, and I guess this is another high-density development, but I guess I like the idea that the, you know, single-family is facing, or abutting the single-family, and the zero lot lines are, you know.
On the other side.
Abutting the other side. There was a couple slides of the elevations that I didn't quite understand the material. It showed two side elevations, that one. The top, the top elevation, I'm not sure of what's going on with that.
Yeah, that one's an odd as well. I mean, their material descriptions are all, you know, fiber, cement board, brick, and stone.
Right.
The top part, especially the one on the top, is, is a different kind of look than anything I've seen before, so I, I will try to get that clarification before next week, because that's, it is an, kind of an odd kind of look. I mean, I think.
Is this supposed to be showing like, left side, right side? What is this supposed to be?
It's just side elevation. I was asking the same thing.
Yeah, it's the side, I think the one on the bottom is one that's more, those that are more visible to Rock Springs Road.
But that one side sheets of plywood tagged up.
The one on the top, I agree.
Well, that would have to be like a basin, I would have thought.
Yeah, it would have to be some sort of fiber, cement board type siding.
But I agree, it's, it's not, it'd be better served, I think, just to have both sides like that lower elevation.
Yeah.
And then the other question was, they're showing two different brick heights on those elevations, and how's it determined where each?
Yeah.
You know, do you use, where do you use a minimal brick? Where do you use the other brick?
And what they, what they're showing and what they're requesting is, it kind of shows up a little bit on page eleven. It's not, there's a, a little kind of a call out. It's basically the, the elevation that's the, the full first floor brick would be the side on that one threeplex that faces Rock Springs Road. And same way on, on the single-family sides of, one facing Rock Springs Road, the rear and side there. The other units would be probably something similar more to just that brick water table. That's what they, that's what they've requested.
I've got two more comments. One, they, they have a driveway layout for the, I guess, the attached units, which is on that same elevation. Where it shows two cars, not, and hope there's not a sidewalk coverage there, so they don't back on to the sidewalk. Had a citizen approached me and saying, in Gwyn Farms, there were cars actually parked over the sidewalk, because the drives were too short to accommodate the cars.
Yeah.
And that's not just Gwyn Farms. We have had that at other places, so, yeah.
Yeah, we, we, that's, it's caught that.
Yeah, and, and this, and these would have, what they're showing is, what we require is like a thirty-eight feet to the garage, so you have.
That three foot.
Yeah, but nineteen, two nineteen-foot back-to-back parking spots and double width.
And, and my question was, it specifically shows townhomes, but not the single-family structures, and I wanted to make, make sure we covered that. Maybe it does, maybe I missed it.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think it's on, I think the townhome one is on page, the page thirteen, which is that sheet right there.
Yeah.
And then the next page is page fourteen.
Got you, got you.
Yeah, it's, it's there.
Thank you.
It's, it's, yeah, it's the same type of thing, but it's just for the single family.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Yeah, one more thing. So, back on the side elevations, what, I understand what you're saying was the bottom one that shows, you know, half-brick, basically. You're saying that's really just the two end units.
It's just the end.
And then all the other single-family units would more, like, more closely be on top.
Yeah, the townhomes and the single-family would have kind of the, the water table on the side, yeah. That's what they, that's what they've requested. That's what they're, that's what they've requested.
Since you gotta go back and ask them, ask them to make them all look like the bottom one.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Sure.
So I had two questions on, what was on the plan, there was something, it says that no signage is currently being proposed for development. Does that mean they're not going to put a sign for the name of this development out in front of it? Is that what that means?
That's what the, they're saying, yeah.
Do you require that?
We, there's not a requirement that a development have a sign. In fact, our ordinance, I'm trying to remember the number, the sign ordinance, there's a minimum number of units before you can even have a sign, which I think this would need, because it's fairly low, I can't remember.
Well, unless there's an HOA included, and these small developments typically may or may not have, uh, a hard-working HOA, and then if you get, if you get sign issues, the HOA's not there to protect, you know, if the sign starts coming down, gets hit by a car or whatever, so there's a lot of them that don't put up signage. Nancy's Place is one, I know there's a sign over there, she's been hit a ton of times.
I was gonna say, they have a sign now.
They do have a sign, they do have a sign, they, you know.
Yeah, they do have one, you're right.
And, and there would be an HOA on this one.
Yeah, there is an HOA.
Third-party, correct?
Yes, yes, it, it would have an HOA, it's, because it's basically going to be sold as an HPR, each unit's going to be sold individually with basically the, the road and everything's going to be private, owned by that, or maintained by the HOA.
So the H, in HPR, that means zero-lot line?
It's hor, that's horizontal property regime.
Uh-huh.
Typically, they're done as condos or town, on townhomes. This is the second or third one we've had where they're doing that with single-family, the one off, uh, first one we had to do that was, uh, which hasn't really started yet, uh, I can't remember what it's called, over by the water plant.
Yeah, it's up Sharp Springs Road there.
Sharp Springs Road, right, where they're all single-family, but they're going to sell them, uh, basically, you're going to own the, the footprint of your house and everything else is going to be common space.
Similar to what you'd see like in, uh, in the beach area, you know, they're single-family, but they're stacked up whole lot.
Right.
Other comments? Okay, we'll move on to item nineteen, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of tax map twenty-eight, partial seventy-two point zero zero from PCD to C two, requested by JLJ Strategic Realty. The property requested to be rezoned contains sixty-nine one-hundredths of an acre and is located at the corner of Isabella Lane and President's Place, and this also is a second reading.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request, um, it's immediately in that corner of those two streets, Isabella Lane and President Place, which would, uh, this, land use plan would designate this property as part of the Samuelley Corridor character area, which kind of, uh, support a combination of retail and services, uh, kind of local and regional in scale. Uh, surrounding zoning is all C two, as well as the PUD, which is Isabella Lane Self-Storage, uh, across the street there. The existing approved PCD would allow a quick-service oil and loot business, um, so this would, and it was previously zoned C two, this would take the zoning back to the original zoning of C two. Uh, the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval.
Questions on this one? Okay, we'll move on to item twenty, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the existing PRD for tax map fifty-four. Parcels forty-one point zero zero and forty-four point zero zero requested by Blakeney General Partners. The property requested to be amended contains thirty-eight point eight-nine acres, is located at eighty-six thirteen and eighty-six seventy-five Rocky Fork Ammable Road, and this also is a second reading.
Yeah, this is an existing approved PRD, um, name of it came in as Tucker's Point. There is, uh, land use plan again would support medium-density, single-family in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of the Blakeney and Courtyards, it's Twous Creek, PRDs in town, and R M in Rutherford County. Uh, the existing approved PRD is for eighty single-family lots and thirty-three townhomes, so it's an overall density of two-point-nine-one per acre. The requested amendment would allow fifty-nine single-family lots and thirty-two townhomes, uh, for an overall density of two-point-three-four houses per acre. Uh, the existing PRD has a minimum house size of sixteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet, the requested amendment would be for fifteen-hundred square feet, but that would just be the conditioned space and would not count the garage, uh, so fifteen-hundred square feet of, of living space. Uh, all houses would have two-car garages, would be finished with brick and concrete siding, uh, the proposed amenities include a playground and dog park. Uh, access would be from a new road connection to Rocky Fork Ammable Road, as well as connecting to Kenwin Pass, which is the street that ended this property from Blakeney. Uh, the planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval, with a couple of conditions, one, to add additional brick or stone on all housing options, especially important for houses with direct visibility from Rocky Fork Ammable Road, and to show the proposed improvements for the common open space that's next to lot thirty-seven and along Kenwin Pass, there's some open space shown that was to be improved, but they didn't, that indicated exactly what they were going to put in those areas, so, those, for the two items, for two conditions as part of the recommendation for approval.
Questions on this item?
Yeah, Kevin, I've got a couple of questions. Are we going from a minimum of sixteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet to fifteen-hundred square feet homes?
We are, uh, the one caveat to that is, the fifteen-hundred square feet is conditioned space, and the sixteen-fifty did include the garage, and so the actual.
Living space is fifteen-hundred square feet.
It's actually going to be larger.
So I guess my biggest question is, are we comfortable to continue to annex and rezone this high-density developments? And my second question is, what roadway improvements are they doing to help to alleviate traffic?
Um, they are not, other than dedicating the right-of-way, they're not proposing any roadway improvements. I know the phase one of the road is from Derby Run to Morton Lane, so I can't remember if this, it would, this would be just north of that area, uh, or just about for what we're looking at doing, um.
Is this section of Rocky Fork already annexed by us?
Yes.
And the, um, the overall density was, you know, I'm not going to put you on the spot with this net density right now, but in the future, I might.
Sure.
But what was the submitted density?
Um, the, the overall density is, it was, it's going down, the existing approved density is two-point-nine-one, and the proposal is, with these changes, is two-point-three-four, that's the gross density.
And that's, that's gross density.
That's gross density, correct.
And the, that area, there looks like there's additional areas above what they're showing has development now, is that going to be a future part of this, or is it going to be unusable land?
The area to the west, uh, there's some, has a very steep topography, that's why they're wanting to change this, there originally, there was going to be a, there was a road on, in Blakeney, on the further west side there, there was going to be a connection there, they couldn't make that, the grades were, it was so steep, they couldn't meet our requirements for, for road grade.
So you don't think they're going to develop that property?
Yeah, that, that area to the west is really, it's, it's so steep, it's not developable, right, that's why they're wanting to change it, they're shrinking the footprint of the development.
Yeah, I've just, I know I'm new to the game, but this, this high-density stuff with fifteen-hundred square feet of livable area is, uh.
This fell under the old guidelines, did it, uh, when it was approved? That's why I was, I was asking, Kevin, did this follow to our old guidelines?
Yes.
So, I, I hear you, this was done prior to us meeting and changing our density levels, so our density level should decrease at this point with the new guidelines we've put, put in place as a council. This one came before, it was already in there. Kevin, there's one thing, uh, may make sense, at least to me, um, how many, how many amenities are we requiring, is it two per somebody home?
We don't have a specific number of amenities, we, we used to, we used to have a list of five or six, and everybody picked two, kind of thing.
Right.
When you hit a hundred homes, you had to pick two. What we have now is we have, you're required to set aside the, the area of open space and then improve at least thirty percent of that, you know, so, um, they're, they have to provide amenities within those things, and, but they're not a specific minimum number, so.
So, oh, go ahead.
Jerome, I'm curious, just because you weren't here when we were meeting with, to talk about the new guidelines, where is your comfort level, or do you have one in regards to density and in regards to home size?
I, I think, I think high-density can be done in a good way, Lennox Village was a very good example, but I'm driving through some of these now, that it's, um, I mean, they're all over on top of each other, and not only is it creating, I guess, um, a congested, you know, area unpleasant, unsightly, but it's adding to all the roadway, um, congestion. If we're, if we're improving roadway infrastructure and providing a quality development, um, it's not necessarily the, the square footage, it's the aesthetics, it's the quality of life that we talk about all the time, the amenities and the infrastructure improvements, that, that's where I'm at.
And I totally hear what you're saying, and I think every one of us up here have struggled with that, but I also think that not everything's going to be able to be the large lots and the large house sizes, I mean, we know what cost is, but I, I don't disagree with the stuff that you're saying as well, but the people that are in those neighborhoods don't seem unhappy, and they seem to like the neighborhoods, they seem to like the amenities, I mean, the ones that I've talked to, I've not heard ones that have bought in those neighborhoods and are saying, I hate this neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, I guess that's where is the balance.
Well, the newcomers, you know, come on in, you know, come on in, be part of the community, but when we're sitting and talking about quality of life, all the congestion and everything's reducing the quality of life of the people that's here and that's invested, you know, that, that's, that's my issue.
And, and I don't disagree, and I think anybody you talk to all over middle Tennessee is going to say that there's going to be congestion, and, and I hate to say this, but probably right now in our community is the best the congestion will ever be, based on number of, number of people moving in.
Yeah.
I'm not saying roads can't be improved, but I think if you talk to any person that looks at traffic with the number of people that are moving in here, there's no way that we're going to be able to go back to how it was ten years ago.
Especially when we're not requiring any roadway improvements, I mean.
Well, we have, we have engineering going on out there now.
Well, look, look at Rocky Fork Ammable Road.
Yeah, there's engineering, it's been engineered, yeah.
Drive it, you know, drive it right now, it, it's a hazard.
Well, we all know roads come later, it seems, you know, I mean, it seems to be that way with state and local and everybody else.
You know, I think we need to do a little bit, and I'm not, you know.
But that's, that's the concern you have, is we don't, we need to not.
That's my concern, that we.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
Developments out here, um, infrastructure's back here, let's try to either equal it or move it ahead.
And so what is, what's your recommendation, because I mean, I think it would be really difficult to just stop development and say, okay, we're not doing anything else. So, I mean, so what?
I'm saying like, let's, we know where all the development's going on, you know, we know, first thing, we annexed out to Independent Hill Road, we annexed the whole right-of-way, which was basically, basically a lollipop annexation. So now, what we're doing is we're annexing from that point all the way back into town, but there's no plans with Ammable Road, even though it's a state highway, we can still partner with T-DOT to get those improvements done. That's all I'm saying, let's be a little bit more proactive than reactive.
Well, and the study that we've looked at doing, the out-ammable, that's being done, um, that's out-ammable road, is looking at those things, and we've, and we asked T-DOT to sit down on those discussions so that they were part of that, so that hopefully we don't get those doors slammed in our face, because I can tell you, staff is really frustrated with things that they've gone and asked T-DOT for and not been approved, and, and it's frustrating because it's not our road to be able to do something with, but I welcome any ideas and suggestions that you have to help that.
We, well, I think the first leg of that, and I think Steve was the champion of that, from one-mile lane to Morton Lane, similar to what the cross-section is now. I mean, we, as a town, can do increments of a state road, just because it's state road doesn't mean we can't improve it. I'm just trying, some way, we've got to get ahead of the curve, you know.
But I don't want, and I don't think you're doing this, I just, I don't want the impression to be given that we as a town have done nothing in regards to, as the roadway.
You asked me my opinion.
No, I didn't say, you said it, I said, I said, I just don't want us to give the impression that that's what it is, because that's not what's happening.
Well, in, in my opinion, I think we need to prioritize roadways and where the development's occurring, and try to get ahead of the curve a little bit more.
So, Jerome, just curious on this particular one, and I'm not challenging, I'm curious your perspective. So we have this development, we have this person who's trying to sell their property, they're coming forward to develop a solution, you know, half the property's pretty much undevelopable, so what do we do in the meantime with these kind of requests? What do you think, what's your opinion on how we, do we, do we deny these until roadway catches up? Do we arbitrarily tell this guy he's got to add a third lane? I mean, what, what is the solution for like this request?
I don't think it's arbitrarily, I think that we've got a cross-section defined for that roadway, and at least that minimum along their track, have them to build that cross-section.
Got you.
You know?
So the length of the road there, you're saying is.
Or a D-cell lane and a left-turn lane, so that the two lanes that we have now are not slowed down any at all, plus sidewalk, curbing gutter, whatever we have planned for the future roadway section.
Got you.
Yeah, just let them get some skin in the game. That's.
You know, one of the things, Jerome, I heard you say, now, you may have been on planning back when all this happened, I can't recall the years it was, but we were handed a pretty bad deal when our, our state decided that we couldn't annex anymore.
Right.
Right, so when you mentioned lollipop annexing, that was the result of us not being able to plan annexation by moving out methodically, and, and now we can't do that. So we have to wait for landowners to ask.
Right, right, because we were kind of, the state felt like we were infringing on private property rights.
Right, and so there's that side of it, too, and I get it, but that's where we are.
Yeah, but at the same time, when those requests come in, we got to decide that we want to annex, if we're annexing that right-of-way, we're basically saying, hey, okay, we're going to bring it up to the city's standards, uh, for travel.
Yep.
Well, one of the things that I, that we had started talking about, um, at the end of last year, was going back and looking at our comprehensive plan, because we have a plan that citizens and business owners and the town has, have developed, um, to try to look at some of these things and plan for it, and I think we just need to go back and spend some more time marrying those things. And I know that generally, when a development comes up, the question is asked, does it fit our plan? And, but that's, as far as we really look at it, is if it fits or not, but we don't necessarily get into the details of how it fits in the plan and what was looked at when the plan was created by all of those stakeholders, and I think that's important to go back and do, because I think it'll marry some of what Jerome is talking about with some of what we are talking about, we're trying to do.
Well, and I think our major thoroughfare plan that we're working on too is, is working on those things as well. Dave, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, thank you. So I want to, I want to point out that back in, in August of two thousand and twenty-two, uh, we went and did an entire corridor study of Ammable Road, and so, um, you know, we presented that to, to T-DOT, and at that time, they, they weren't really interested in any of the recommendations that, that were in there. I agree, I don't think that we should just take that initial no as, as, and, and then not move, you know, try to do some more things. But there is, there, there is an attempt, you know, on, on the town's behalf to try to move this, these things forward. I am excited about the major thoroughfare plan and the SS four A, uh, exercise that we're doing right now, because I really think that, that's a, a huge step for the town to move forward, trying to get grant funding for many of these roadway projects that address safety concerns, um, multimodal type of activity and those sorts of things, so, um, really excited that we're going to be sharing that with, with you all here soon. Additionally, you know, we have the, the, the joint meeting with the council and the planning, uh, commission coming up, and we've got some topics a little bit later, um, Kevin will talk to you about. Um, Kevin will talk to you about some agenda items that we have coming up for, for that, which, you know, look to just address some of the things that we are doing. Um, and it is, it is quite frankly, you know, it's about relationships with T-Dot. And I think we have, um, we're starting to, I don't want to say we're starting, um, but we are working towards, um, getting in front of the right people. Because one of the things that we were trying to do with, with Amityville Road was, um, have them, because up until what about maybe six months ago less, we thought that interchange was coming. So that interchange.
February.
Okay, February. So February, all right. And, and so up till that point, that interchange really was going to be the linchpin, if you will, to.
To release some of that man head out.
Exactly, and start moving segmented out on, on that road. Well, now that that isn't happening, um, it's, it's, okay, what's the next strategy?
But it shouldn't hamstring us for the segments.
Exactly, so maybe, maybe, maybe we need to amend our strategy on that, right? So, um, if we're not going to get the interchange or, um, which I don't, I don't think that, based on some recent conversations with T-Dot, I, I think they recognize that they can't just put all of those things to the side. Um, so we're going to have some more conversation with them to see, see where they're at. And, and I think there's a willingness, there's certainly a willingness to hear us, hear us out. I also think there, there's possibly a willingness to, to work with us on how do we address those concerns that you, that you made commitments to before and now we, and, and now with the, the Choice Lane project, it, it's kind of putting a wrinkle in our, in our plan. So, um, I look forward to those conversations with them and sharing this additional information with you guys. Um, but I do think that we cannot just, um, we can't just sit back and, and, and wait for, for T-Dot to hand it to us, we're going to have to push for it.
And I think something's going to help us, what we're doing Friday morning.
Yeah.
You know, the legislative breakfast.
It's always up.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think it's important, and I totally agree. We know, because we're immersed in it at meetings as to what projects we're looking at, but they cover more than just the town's smartness. So we've got to make sure that they understand what projects that we're needing their help with and getting pushed through with T-Dot.
Right, well, I appreciate this, uh, discussion.
Yeah, can, can I ask one more question, kind of back to what we were talking about a few minutes ago? So we've always, as long as I've been on the council, we've always kind of taken the approach with these developers that traffic studies required, anything the traffic study recommends, you have to implement. But we've never really gotten into, that I can remember, cases where we've told them, traffic study may not warrant it, but you still have to do X. Um, we've done that in a couple of cases, I know there was an apartment complex, we made them, um, out there by the hospital, we made them put the light up, uh, didn't really matter whether it was required, we required it. Uh, so we've done that in a couple isolated cases. So my only question is, is if, is it as simple as if we, let's say this development as an example, if we said we want this development to have ingress egress lanes in and out of the, in, in and out on Rocky Ford Amityville Road, right? If we said we want turning lanes left and right, both sides. And they said, no, we think that's unreasonable, we don't think we need it, traffic study doesn't support it, et cetera. Is it as simple as us just saying, if you're not willing to do that, then we don't approve your annexation? Or is there a legality there, and this may be for Jeff, is there a legality there denying something? We're asking for something that maybe we can't justify, um, is there a legality there by denying it if they refuse to do it?
Well, it's similar to the Nolan Dolan test, uh, where you're, uh, got to have a nexus between what you're, what you're taking. This is not, would not so much be a taking, but an improvement. Uh, just need to have an articulable reason. I don't know that it's any one person's review, but you would have to be defensible of why you're doing it.
Yeah, exactly, where I'm coming from, and that we, you know, you probably remember this, I know you do. We had a, we had a car lot and a gas station that had kind of the same thing. And it came to BZA and basically we said, the ingress and egress on that road is not good enough. It's going to cause people to slow down and try to make a hard right turn with nowhere to slow down. If we're not going to add deceleration lanes, we're not approving it. And we didn't.
Right.
We got sued, um, it went to forward, the judge sent it back and said reconsider. Essentially nicely told us, either change it or we're going to change it. And we ended up pretty much having to give in and give them what they want. And to me, this doesn't seem a lot different, other than it's not commercial, it's residential. So I, that's all I'm worried about is, I, I, I hear everything you're saying, I agree completely, but I just don't know about the legality.
It's a tad different from BZA because that, uh, this would be a legislative action.
Instead of judicial, right.
And, and so, uh, you know, each case is going to stand on its own. But I think as, as long as you can articulate and there's a reasonable to do it, I will point out though, with the annexation, there's no right to it being annexed. And so even more, you know, zoning, there's a little bit more where they could maybe say, well, you're, you're not treating me fairly on zoning. But annexation, there's, there, you can't force the city to take in, uh, property. And so you're going to have a lot more flexibility.
So to answer my question, if, if we decided that we want to require especially a long Amityville Road or Rocky Fork Amityville, any development coming forward has to add deceleration acceleration lanes into their complex. And if we just said, that's going to be a requirement or that's what we want.
Well.
If they, if they don't want to do it, it's just simply they just don't get the annex.
That, or you can put it in your, sorry.
Go ahead.
Put it in motion or something.
Well, you want to treat people fairly as well. Um, so if you wanted those type of lanes on any of those, uh, thoroughfares or, or however entries into the city, uh, then it might be good to even put it into our ordinance that this is required for these types of developments over a certain amount of.
Where my mind's going, Mayor Esther, and you probably remember this, is we had this conversation, there were four developments along the Lee Road corridor area there, where the first one or two didn't require any road updates.
Right.
But the third and the fourth one kind of got the brunt of it, right? They had to do all these upgrades because now there was four times as many houses as there was. If we required everyone to do the same thing, now you're kind of, you, maybe you still have to do a traffic study and if there's additional stuff, you got to do that. But if we required them all to do this, now every developer's kind of paying the same amount along the way to get the road there.
Well, and I think another example is along Amityville Road. And I think we discussed this is, you know, about the town, um, securing a third party traffic engineer consultant. Because staff has a lot to do, you know, staff has immense work to do. You get that third party consultant in where they review it, you know, then they make recommendations on what needs to be done. And I think we'd all have a better comfort level of what's being required and not being required.
Yeah, I think, Dave, you mentioned that's what you guys did in Florida, is that right? That y'all had like a list?
We, we did for this exact reason, and it really amounts to, I, I, the traffic engineer that is, that is hired by, uh, the developer, they, they should be transparent, independent. At the end of the day, they're, they're working for that developer. And so one of the strategies that we employed was to, um, i- is to contract with a, a transportation consultant who would review that data for, for its validity and, and also make some, some, some recommendations for us if, if need be. And we did it as a cost recovery pass through. So, uh, I, you know, we, we have been looking at that, um, myself and Kevin have been, have been looking at that. I think that's something that we're, we're looking to see how we need to structure it. Um, but we're certainly moving in that direction.
Is that something you could bring forward and talk to us about at the joint meeting?
I was fixing to say the same thing.
Sure.
Is that, I mean, do you think you could get the information?
Yeah, later on, we're going to talk, we can talk about now, just any ideas, thoughts you all have, that you would like to talk about. I'm also going to reach out to the planning commission, ask them the same question. Anything that you all would like us to cover, and we've got a little less than an hour, so we, we can't talk about everything maybe, but at least.
Well, and that's one other thing I do want to talk about is, I understand all of our time's valuable, but I think the joint planning commission meetings, I would like for us not to have them on the same night or at least give us more time. I think an hour is not, is not enough, I see him.
At least. Fortunately, I think me and Raquel are the only ones that really have a job, so it's okay.
Last time I checked, I had a job.
You don't really work, you know that.
So. So, if we could do two hours, I think.
We'll check with the, the, the planning commission and see if that, if they can do that. And if it doesn't work for them, uh, to do three o'clock, we'll, we'll look for another date where we can, we can start at four and go to six.
Gosh, Kevin, we gave you all the holidays off, but you know, we just hit you up for about six or eight weeks of study back there.
Okay, anything else on item 20 before we move on with that? Okay, then item 21 is discussion on the upcoming 2025 compensation review, including an overview of current market data, internal equity considerations and potential adjustments to align with organizational goals. Golly, Jeff Craig, could you have made that any longer?
Let me give a little introduction for Mr. Craig.
Have we ever heard of that?
Maybe longer than my presentation.
If I can just give a, a brief introduction, one of the challenges that I, that I was handed when I, when I first got here really was looking at our recruitment strategy, particularly as it relates to public safety positions. And as we did that, um, we, we came up with some, some recommendations that we want to, want to give to. Now, I've had discussions with, with each one of you individually on, on this matter. Um, but I thought it was important to just give you an update as a council at this point to ensure that we are moving at least in the right direction. Um, so that, uh, poor Jeff here, who's got enough on his plate, doesn't spin his wheels and, and go down a rabbit hole that we're, that we're not looking to, to move forward with. So, um, we're not, we're not up there yet, but, um, we, we wanted to show you what we're, what we're looking to do. And I could certainly jump in, Jeff, if there's anything that needs to be added at the end, so thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for doing this.
Appreciate that. So, yeah, this will just be a quick, I'm just going to cover a quick review of kind of our past strategies for compensation, kind of where we're at right now and kind of what some of our recommendations are going forward, just to kind of get your support along the way. Um, so.
Batteries are probably dead.
My tea.
Yes, our support.
Batteries are only good for.
There we go, all right, there we go. All right, so I can really only talk back to when I started, which was in 2007. Uh, the town had been using J.E. Mittler for some compensation consulting projects. The last one we did with J.E. Mittler was in 2009. Uh, and then when we looked to do this study again about five or six years later, uh, Mr. Mittler had passed away. So we had to move to a different firm. Uh, and so we started using Steve Thompson and Associates in 2015, uh, made some adjustments at that time to our compensation plan. Again, in 2020, we worked with Steve Thompson to review this stuff as well. And then really every other year, pretty much every year, uh, myself and my department look at our compensation plan. We get some data from, uh, Steve Thompson's biannual local government salary survey, where we have 50, 60 cities across the state that participate in that study. And that's the data that we've used every year to try to keep us on track the best we can. Looking historically at our pay philosophy, you know, really before 2015, I don't know if we specifically had a pay philosophy, but starting in 2015, we kind of designated that, hey, we're going to try to pay the market average around the 50th percentile of statewide data or better. So some of our jobs, we were already paying better than that. Some of our jobs, if they were below that, we brought them up to at least that, uh, at market average for jobs in the state. Uh, in '22, uh, council remembers, that was just a few years ago, that we decided to move this, be a little bit more aggressive and try to move to the 70th percentile, meaning that we're going to try to pay in the top third of the state when it comes to salaries. So that is kind of where we've gotten to most recently. Looking to where we are right now, kind of what do things look like in our, in our area? When you're really looking at who our top competitors are, you're looking at Franklin, Murfreesboro, Brentwood, Metro, Lebanon, and Gallatin and Spring Hill, those are some of the top paying cities in the middle Tennessee area. Uh, when you're looking at municipal salaries, those continue to go up, uh, just to make sure that, that cities are addressing recruitment, hiring, make sure they're keeping good employees and not losing employees. Uh, honestly, our current target of the 70th percentile across the state is lagging in the middle Tennessee area. The middle Tennessee area is booming, it's growing, a lot of stuff is happening. And so the salaries here in middle Tennessee are much more competitive than what we were trying to compare ourselves to somewhere in western, West Tennessee or even in East Tennessee. Uh, and so as Mr. Santucci referred to a few minutes ago, we have done a review of public safety salary data from 10 cities right in the middle Tennessee area. We would consider our peers, our competitors. And really, our police and fire salaries are really closer to the 50th percentile when you're looking at that middle Tennessee area. Uh, and our initial review, Dave asked us to go ahead and look at all of our other jobs, which is a much bigger project, but one we've already started. We're seeing a very similar findings that we're behind that 70th percentile when you're looking at our core area. So some of the concerns with that is that, you know, we are starting to see some strugglies to, to struggles to recruit and retain people. You know, we're, we'll get somebody on board, they leave to take another job. Or if you're looking at, you know, police and fire, you know, we're the seventh or eighth city that they've applied to. And so by the time all those cities have taken candidates, we kind of get some of the leftover candidates. Some of those are still great candidates, but some of them aren't the cream of the crop that maybe Murfreesboro or Franklin or Brentwood have the options to choose from. Uh, we have, we are losing employees, we've lost several employees just in the last few months. Uh, some of our, our peer cities are increasing their wages. So all that being said, uh, what, what I'd like to do is move our pay philosophy to the 70th percentile or the top third of the middle Tennessee area. So how do we figure that out? So what I've done is I've designated 10 cities that I feel like we should sort of use as our measuring stick on our salaries. And that would be Murfreesboro, Brentwood, Franklin, Lebanon, Metro, Hendersonville, Mount Juliet, Laverne, Spring Hill and Gallatin. So when you, when you look at those cities, we would like to be in the top 30th percent of all those cities when it comes to, to pay. So it doesn't mean we're going to be the top paid, but also it doesn't mean we're going to be the least paid or even where half those people are paying better than us. So looking at that, right now, we've already done the assessment that we feel like to bring police and fire to where it's in that 70th percentile in the middle Tennessee area, it's going to be about 1.5 million to fix that. So if you extrapolate that to the rest of the, the city, we expect somewhere around 2.5, maybe a little bit more to adjust that for all of our salaries. And so really just looking for a little direction from council is, does this sound like a good pay philosophy to move towards? Or do you want us to continue doing what we're doing now or something else entirely?
Does that 2.5 to 3 million estimate, that gets all of the job families to that third, that, so it's not some this year, some next year? It's a one fail swoop kind of thing?
That would be correct.
But this is a moving target, right?
It is a moving target, and, and that's kind of what we found last year, because we were, we felt pretty good with our recommendations last year and some of our pace, our peer cities, after, after we had already approved what we were going to do, they gave some pretty hefty pay increases. And so obviously that puts us a little bit behind the eight ball sometimes, but, uh, you know, using.
As I'm saying, they weren't going to.
Yeah, I would be, correct, correct.
I think the, I think the county's considering one right now that may or may not even be in your numbers, right?
If I may, to the, that, that 2.5 to 3, that's across all funds as well? So it's, it's, you know, utility phone and all, it would hit all.
Not all, just spread out through all of them, I should say.
In regards to public safety, I know some of the areas that we've been hurting in is not just starting pay, but where that they increase their pay pretty significantly after being there that one to five years. Are we looking at that as we're looking at this?
We can do that. I know one of the things that we did most recently is we kind of got rid of our trainee position. Instead of bringing people in as a trainee and then bumping them out of the academy, we're bringing them in directly as a, as a police officer pay, so try skipping, skipping that part of it. Uh, but obviously we can consider, as well, if you'd like for us to do that.
Well, I, I mean, I know that Metro was specifically one of them that.
Yeah, they, they have their step program where for every year, you get an automatic bump. And that's in addition to your merit increases. And, um, it's going to be hard to keep up, we do 2.5 million every year probably and try to keep up with something like that. And I'm not necessarily saying that we have to keep up, we just got to be at least competitive.
Well, and I just want to make sure that we're looking at everything, not just that starting pay as to, um, and I know, I think Murfreesboro in chief, you may be able to help me a little bit with this. I think Murfreesboro is doing something, if you're an experienced officer and come to, that, um, there was a pay incentive for that as well.
Yeah, it's like 70.
And so, you know, their pay structures are a little bit different than ours because they are on a step system and, and we're not.
Right.
Uh, but that doesn't mean that we can't find some target salary that seems to fit for bringing post-certified people over to the town.
Right.
So that, that's definitely on the table.
And that's, that's something that we've looked at pretty immediately when I, when I first got here is, is how we, um, how we look at positions when we're doing promotions or bringing somebody in with experience and, and having a really kind of objective look at that. And so Jeff's done a, a really good job putting together some, i- i- it's math, you know, and so. And so, we look at, you know, where others in the pay class are and their experience levels. We look at who's coming in and what their experience level is. And we try to match them up so we don't shake up the equity of the entire organization, but it is equitable for everybody.
The other thing that we've done in the past, and I should know this, is we have had them sign off on their entire benefits package each year. Is that something we're still doing?
As far, well, not necessarily. When you're talking about sign off, are you talking about we presented them with information?
Yes.
Total compensation.
Yes.
Right. So, the plan is to probably continue to do that, but with the magnitude of this project, that's probably going to get pushed a little bit. So, Dave and I have talked about that, and we've kind of tabled that for right now. But we still have the ability to do that.
I don't want that to go away because I do think that the total package that we provide employees, and I think sometimes all they look at is, what is that number on my check that I get every two weeks? And so, I want to make sure that we're showing them the benefit of the entirety of the package.
We continue to hear in the community all the time, and that doesn't matter whether you're in Smyrna, Murfreesboro, or Nashville. Some of our health benefits and our coverage is the best in the state, probably. And that shouldn't be something that's just not, that's forgotten, right? We have very good, very good. I mean, I go to the eye doctor. Every time they see it, they question it because they're like, there's no way your benefits are this good. They say that literally every time.
Don't tell them that.
And we do try to leverage that when we're posting jobs to let them know about our benefits. But, you know, the struggle that we have, Steve, is that we'll get 20-year-old employees.
They don't care about that.
They're on their mom's insurance or their dad's insurance still. They don't think about that.
Especially with fire and public.
Yeah, it's kind of tough leveraging that at times. But we do our best to try to sell that when we're posting jobs and trying to encourage people.
But I just, I want to make sure that doesn't go away.
To follow up on that, Mayor, we, you know, when I own the business, we tried to present that as well, you know? And, but I understand about losing, you know, employees to the competitors and everything. And when I ran a business, we were small business competing with the big guys. And it's uphill struggle.
Yep.
Well, and I don't know what it is specifically. Maybe it's just simply pay. But it seems like in the police area, that's kind of a common practice, is to kind of jump around a little bit. I was at the Metro graduation today. They graduated 31 recruits. Six of those were officers from other cities. So, 20% of the ones that graduated this today were transfers. And so, I mean, it just kind of seems like that's kind of what's happening right now. There's a lot of Smyrna police officers that now work for Murfreesboro or the sheriff or work somewhere else and vice versa.
But I think that's society in general. It's, you're not seeing people staying with a company or a town or, you know, for their whole career. It's, they're pretty mobile. So, but Jeff, you asked if this is the direction. For me, this is the direction I want to see us continuing to go and them to work on. Council, or the rest of you, the same?
Yeah, absolutely.
The investment in our employees is the most important thing we do.
Yep.
Yes, it is. So, Dave, talk a little bit, because employees are going to hear this, and they're going to say, oh, my gosh, we're getting ready to get this huge pay increase. So, let's talk a little bit about your thought process on timing.
Look, Amber's ass is broken.
I'm nodding because I had some coworkers say they were tuning into the meeting tonight, so.
Yeah, and truth be told, I think one of the reasons we wanted to do this was just because there's buzz out there and want to make sure that, you know, the expectations are not out of control. So, as Jeff said, we've got employees who are probably at that 70th percentile. So, I think really, the strategy here is that this is more of a market adjustment, not an across-the-board adjustment, right? So, we want to make sure that all of our employees are within this range. And if they're there, great, congratulations. You've been getting it the whole time. If you're behind, we want to catch you up. So, am I wrong in saying that?
That's correct. We'll look at it job title to job title. And that's part of what takes the project so long, is we're having to compare a park's job title to a park's job title in 10 other cities that they may call it something else. So, it's just a little time-consuming to do that. It's a little bit easier with police and fire because of police officer to police officer, lieutenant to lieutenant, it's a little bit easier. But it's a little bit more problematic doing it with the rest of the employees. But that's the process we're in right now.
Are you expecting July 1 is what your thought process is? Or are you thinking before that?
I think we can get it done before that.
Okay.
We're trying to get it done before that.
Okay.
On the, I understand the job title to job title. Does the longevity factor into that when you're looking at that job title to job title?
Yeah, we're not really trying to do a benefit to benefit. We're really just looking at salary to salary.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
I'm glad you're looking at it. I think our employees will appreciate it, too.
And we appreciate, we know it's a tough job for you guys, but we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Under other discussion relative to the proposed Rutherford County Forensic Center, I know that Mayor Carr is coming to brief us on this at our January 14 meeting. Dave, I think you wanted just to prepare us, give us some info.
Yep. So, in your packet, you had a one-pager. And so, that's really what's going to be the focus of the discussion that Mayor Carr gives at the council meeting. Wanted to put this on the workshop just to make sure that you all had the opportunity to get that information. And of course, any discussion that you wanted to have amongst yourselves here tonight.
So, I'm asking a question I think I already know the answer to. Obviously, Mayor Carr and, I guess, proponents of this is wanting our support and buy-in, I'm sure. But is there a request for funds associated to this? Or is this, do we expect the mayor or the county to ask for money here?
My, yeah, my understanding is no. This is on the county's dime.
I think, I can tell you, when Mayor Carr came and talked to Brian and I about this, he had asked if there might be any fees that we might be able to waive or any of that. But that's a discussion that he and Dave can have, and Dave can make that recommendation. But in regards to a large ask from us, it's my understanding that that is not the case. And that's what Joe told me the last time that I saw him. So. Chief, you may be prepared now, or you may would rather wait till the 14th. But I am curious from our detectives or from the police department's perspective in regards to a forensic center and what we're having to do, sending them to Nashville at this point, are we seeing backup? Are we seeing issues with that? Or would you rather wait and kind of have discussion with your people and then talk to us on the 14th?
I've not heard any concerns as far as backup or issues with the forensic center. But I can say from my experience, from Hamilton County, having our forensic center there, when I worked homicide for five years, it was a tremendous asset to have that local and not having to travel to Nashville, which I did have to do a couple of times. Having a forensic center, in my opinion, for a county this size with a population is a need.
And we can ask, it is a for-profit one in Nashville, and so, we're kind of at their mercy as to the length of time at which the autopsies are done. But that is an expense, that is entirely the county's expense. Is that correct, Jeff? Yeah.
So, in the fact sheet that we were provided, it talks about Rutherford County and 63 other counties that would have no resources available if there was an issue with the for-profit center in Nashville. So, a facility here, being one of the sixth in the state, obviously would not just benefit Smyrna and Rutherford County. Potentially, there's some number of those other 63 counties that would send their work here, too, right? That's my understanding? I mean, it would be a statewide. It wouldn't just be for the county.
I think that would be a decision that the county then would be able to make. Is that not correct? I mean, that's probably a question for Joe, but.
Because I guess that's my point, right? Is if we, the county and the town, takes on the project and we're supporting it and we're behind it, what do we do to ensure that we are the ones that get the majority of the benefit from it if we're taking it all on? And if that's not the idea, everybody's supposed to equally get it, then these other 63 counties need to put in some money, too.
I'd say it's going to be sort of like what they do with juvenile detention, that other counties can contract, especially the smaller counties can contract with, and that's going to be up to them. But I would assume that what they do currently with juvenile detention is that places that don't have that kind of, those kind of facilities, they'll contract with another one to keep the lights on.
Yeah, I know it's not quite apples to apples, but I'm just thinking of trash services and some other things where the county's taking it on, it's benefited a bunch of other folks, but then eventually, it becomes a county problem because everyone else is getting benefit from it, too. That's the part I would be concerned about.
I can tell you, it may have changed. I don't think it has. But I think Hamilton County is exclusive to Hamilton County. The other county couldn't use their forensic center.
Gotcha.
I was surprised to see that, other than Metro, we ordered a second highest number of autopsies in the state. So, maybe those other counties are going, it's time for you guys to kind of pay.
Exactly. They're kicking us out, right? This could be, well, you know, I think that's, I'm not opposed if we have the facilities and the availability and the capability to help other counties do some of this, especially smaller counties that couldn't have their own. Absolutely, we should be doing that. But if Rutherford County citizens are going to take on the expense, then I think we should have some sort of assurances that we're not going to get behind because we're supporting all these other counties now. And it probably is a question for Joe, but it's just one of the questions that came to mind with the fact sheet to me.
Thanks. Okay. Charles? Anything? Caught anything? Carl? Jeff? Tom?
He hasn't had his beating today.
Well, I talked to Mr. Santucci. He wanted me to bring up a little bit about salting and plowing. As you know, we're going to begin some winter weather coming in this Friday. Give everybody a little bit of an update on what we do here. Public Works Department oversees salting and plowing, also with a lot of assistance from a police department to make sure other drivers and our drivers stay safe on the roads as well. We have a large salt bin out on G Street at our shop. We have trucks, dump trucks with salt bins, plows, salt spreaders. We have pickup trucks with those things as well. And what we do is we prioritize our roads. First priority would be roads like around Stonecrest Hospital, all our major roads, Olive Road, Sam Ridley, Old Nashville Highway, roads that are state roads. And then, we also work to make sure that our other facilities who continue to operate during storm events stay open. So, we'll salt and plow through like the Justice Center, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, EMS buildings, town hall, places like that. And then, after, and there's a list of all of our number-one priority roads on our website. If you go on to townofsmyrna.org, go to Public Works, and there we do have some winter weather information describes all of our number-one priority roads. And then, once we kind of get those under control, we have secondary roads as well that we try to get to as far as salting and plowing goes. We can't do all the roads in town. We don't have enough capability to do that. But we do try to do the major roads if people can get out, if they can get to the major roads that can get out places, so.
I do this every year and be glad to do it again. But I am available for plow truck driving.
All right. Keep you in mind.
I will tell you, council, my goal will be to stop some street parking issues that we have. But hey, just call me. I'll be there.
All right.
Middle of the night, I don't care.
But just to let citizens know, unless there is a major heal in your neighborhood, your neighborhoods are probably not going to be done. We just do not have the manpower. I think I was looking at Murfreesboro. Did it say 63 people within their division? And how many people do we have in our department?
In streets and stormwater combined that do the work, we're probably talking about 12 people.
So, you think about, you think about 12 people trying to handle the number of roads that we have in town. And we do have the ability to contract out if it's, I know during the ice storm, the major ice storm we had, we contracted out some. But just to ask people, one, please be patient and know that we are trying our best to get you out and about and moving around. But if you don't have to be out within climate weather, please stay home.
I have a question, Tom. On the state roads that we clear, how is, are we compensated by T-DOT? You know, similar to us maintaining the state roads?
And as trucks go out, we keep tabs on what roads that those trucks go out on. So like I said, primarily, we hit state routes first, and we keep up with the number of tonnage that is put on those roads. We keep up with man-hours, police, everybody else, and then we put a bill into T-DOT for that. So yes, we get totally reimbursed, and it works out pretty well in our favor because we even get, they pay for the benefits of the employees as well, so.
Now I know why Andy's always following the truck.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Thanks.
Thanks.
Mike?
Oh, yes, you do. You've got a water tank to talk about, don't you?
I'll do it. I'll get it done. It's fun. Yeah, so as you know, or maybe you don't, we have the water tower, the reclaimed water tower over there by Motlow College. So the college and the university have been working together on a logo. We had a meeting about this a couple of months ago when I first came on board. This is the logo that they've come up with, so this is what we'll be moving forward with when we go ahead and paint that tower. Just wanted to present that to the council.
One of the instructors over there asked me if we could put Motlow towards the Motlow building and then TSU on the other side. So I guess they came up with another alternative.
And I will tell you that Dave was the one who came up with a pathway to success. So he was in the meeting and came up with that. But Motlow and MTSU are both really excited about this project, so, and they're both putting in a little money to help towards it, so that's always a good thing.
Now, I guess Motlow has a pathway to MTSU.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Through the two-year.
They are, it's my understanding, they're their largest.
Recipient of students.
Yeah, of the, of the.
Two-year program.
Two-year program, so yeah. Okay. Sierra? Mike?
Good.
You good?
Just briefly, I mentioned it earlier, but if you all, excuse me, if you all have anything you would like for us to talk about with your joint planning council meeting, just let us know. We're working on some things, certainly, which is a few tonight, but we will be putting that agenda together for a meeting on, currently, our first meeting is on the thirtieth at four o'clock, so before the council workshop.
And we're going to check times. You're going to get back with us. We'd like to do.
Right.
Three.
Three.
I was going to say four, three, yeah. Okay, perfect.
Question, Kevin. How long, are we finished with the mobility survey, or is that still going on?
It's still going on. It's probably going to be on much longer. We actually had our, kind of our monthly progress meeting today. It is still out there.
How's it going?
We've had about, I think we've had about sixty responses so far.
Okay.
Which is a pretty good, Ms. Kent put it out kind of right before Christmas, and we actually got a pretty good response. We were pretty small there at the beginning, so. And again, we have that, it's on the twenty-eighth, we have that joint meeting as well with Planning Commission, but speak about that as well as the SS4A project.
Okay. Anything else?
I got.
Heather?
Oh, no, man. I was looking at him, I was thinking, I think we're going to send some emails out to some boards and deans next week to encourage more participation.
Great. She?
Paying attention, Al.
You know if I see you not paying attention, that's when I'll call you out. So he learned that at the ribbon cutting the other day. Amber?
Right. I do have the census slide tonight, so we are in our final push. With the new year comes the countdown to our census coming to a close. We need a lot more responses, so we are meeting this week to get creative with how we can get those responses. Our second mailer is still very slowly trickling in. It's kind of dripping like you should be if your faucet's at home, so.
Good one.
We're trying to get a little creative. We've got some ideas that we've kind of tossed around. We're looking at a text option to kind of hopefully get the word out and keep it, you know, engaged. We have been meeting with firefighters, the planning department has, to get them kind of trained up to speed on the back end. We've got door hangers ready to go, and I really cringe at having to send our firefighters out to go knock on all these doors in the frigid weather, so I'm just encouraging everybody to, please, if you have that yellow sheet of paper laying around, to go ahead and get that filled out and sent back in. Or you can call up to Town Hall, and you can give it to me over the phone, or anybody else that answers the phone. You can come into Town Hall if you don't want to get a bit over the phone and you'd like to do it in person, I'll gladly take your information. And then also, you can jump online and do it right online from your smartphone or tablet computer. So there's multiple ways to get it done. A few things reminders, responses are confidential for law, or by law, for seventy-two years. There is no, it's never made available to law enforcement or immigration, and there is no citizenship question or requirement to fill it out. If you live here, we would love for you to be counted regardless of your status. And speaking of, you know, roads and infrastructure and public services and, you know, things like that, that's exactly what this money benefits. We get a hundred and seventy-five dollars per person that we count, and that comes in the way of state shared revenue that comes back to our community from the state level. So it would help talking about sidewalks and safe streets for all, and keeping our public service employees paid the way they should be. This money would all benefit that and kind of offset. So please help us by jumping on and getting it done today. That's all I have.
Dave?
Got a few things. First, want to talk about Shop with a Cop that occurred over the holiday season, and it's a really special event where we take some underprivileged children and we go shopping with them. And I just want to thank Chief and all your folks who were out there doing that. It's a really special day, it's a really touching day, and it's amazing, it's amazing what those kids focus on when they're out there shopping. So a very special experience, just want to thank you all for that, and that was a great, great thing that you guys do, so appreciate it. Christmas tree drop-off, we're doing that right now. We're doing it through January nineteenth. And you can go ahead and drop off your Christmas tree at Lee Victory Recreation Park up until the nineteenth, so don't leave those on the curb. Send them over to Lee Victory Park. I think we mulch them up, or, yes, we mulch them up, and we'll take care of that for you, so that service is available for you for free. Whoa, look at this, mobility plan.
I don't want to talk about it.
So, yeah, we talked a lot about mobility tonight, and just want to reinforce that this survey is out there. And look, this is, this is the public's opportunity to have a say in what roadway priorities look like in the future, you know? So get off of Facebook, get onto the survey, tell us what you think here. This is really where it's going to matter, and it really looks to identify our existing and future, you know, transportation issues that are identified by the public, and help us to determine, you know, how we're going to address those roadway congestion and connectivity issues. So please get onto that survey and help us out, greatly appreciate it. Tell your friends. Next, I'd like to recognize our men and women in uniform for law enforcement. That National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day is January ninth, and spent the majority of my day last week there, out at a scene that luckily ended up probably with the best result we could have asked for. And you spend the time out there, and you see what these men and women do, and the danger that they put themselves into in some cases on a daily basis, and just want to recognize, Chief, you, all your folks, folks nationwide on their service to this, to their communities. So National Law Enforcement Day, Appreciation Day is January ninth. Thank you, officer. A couple of other things that I just have real quick. Talked a little bit about the legislative meeting that we have on Friday. Unfortunately, that may be weather, if the weather, if the weather's bad, we're not going to be able to, we might not be able to do it. I'll let you all know either tomorrow afternoon or Thursday morning at the latest, but we do have, you know, the city's response ready to go for that, as Tom talked about. We may need to look at possible closures of non-critical functions here in the city, depending on how the roadways are. And right now, there's fairly confident, this is from the National Weather Service, their latest report, they're pretty confident in snow beginning on Friday throughout the day with traffic impacts Friday through potentially Saturday and Sunday. So if you don't have to be on the roads, don't. Go out, do your grocery shopping now, and just Netflix and chill, I guess, for the weekend, so that's all I have, thank you.
And fill out your census information.
That's right.
Jeffrey L.
I'll say thoughts and prayers with the victims, New Orleans families.
Great. Jerome?
Yeah, just follow up on some, I know during my orientation sit-down with Dave and Tom and Charles, one of the things that was discussed, and probably discussed it during the budgetary meetings, was a roadway grading system through a software or metrics to decide which roadways are paved, you know, and to develop a five, ten-year, fifteen-year pavement plan, which gives us the tools to, I guess scientifically, decide, you know, which roadways we need to pave. And I know Mr. Tubbs is in the audience, lives out on Morton Lane. There were some issues at the intersection of Morton Lane and Amityville Road that Dave and Tom are addressing, and I know the town staff went out there. That's one of the priorities when they come in in the spring to pave that intersection, because I think what's happening is rolling because of the bus traffic out there. And then Mr. Tubbs also mentioned that his roadway was like a drag strip out there, Chief, if you get out there on Morton Lane. But I just appreciate you being here, sir.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay.
All right, Happy New Year to everyone. I wanted to say it was an honor to be a part of yesterday's ribbon cutting. I'm sure you have pictures to talk about that, don't you? Do you have pictures? I think you got them all today. Somebody else have a picture?
I do. It's the last one.
Okay. I just think it was a great turnout yesterday, and very excited to see the new building at Station Four. And Chief Colleton, just really honored and proud of him to be celebrating thirty-five years of service to the town, and very thankful to him for all that he's done. And that's all I have, Mayor.
To piggyback on that, had discussion with Chief, because I think we all love Chief, but we know how Chief is in regards to recognition, and he did agree to allow us to do a retirement party for him, so we'll be getting that together and letting everybody know when that's going to be, so. Jerry?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, kind of piggyback on the law enforcement, I want to say thank you to our men and women as well. We appreciate everything that you do for our town and community and our county. I know, Mayor, you have someone in your family as well, but we do appreciate them so much. Unfortunately, I had, went to a couple of funerals here recently. Friend of mine that lives here in Smyrna named Jim Crofts, so my thoughts and prayers go out to Jim and Jim's wife and family, and I just pray comfort for them. And then also Zeke Clements, some of you may have known Zeke, lives just down the road here. I used to live almost across the street from him over on Brookhaven, and my father-in-law and mother-in-law live right next door to him, and then HG lives two doors down from him, and so just wanted to send out my sympathy to Judy and the family as well. Those of you that knew Zeke, he was a funny guy, and it just was really fun to be around, and I could tell you a whole lot of stories between him and my father-in-law, but they just, they had a great time together. Chief, congratulations on your retirement as well. We appreciate everything that you've done for this town, and I know we'll get to celebrate that here in the near future, but just want to congratulate you on that, and that's all I've got, Mayor.
Steve?
Just a couple of things. Happy New Year. Hope everyone enjoyed their holidays. There is quite a few bugs going around, so wash your hands, stay safe, keep your distances. Today, earlier today, I've got a slide, or earlier today, I got the opportunity to attend the Metro Police Department Academy of Graduation. This was a little special because that's my son, Kevin Sullivan, graduated just today after twenty-four weeks in the police academy. They do not give you much time to acclimate. He starts his first shift tomorrow afternoon, so congratulations to Kevin. I know he's put a lot of work in it. This, most of you know he was also in the Marine Corps for four years. The reality is, this is kind of what he always wanted to do. When he graduated high school, when he was a kid, he always said he wanted to be a police officer. Initially, when he wanted to go in the Marine Corps, he wanted to be an MP in the Marine Corps. He was kind of talked out of that a little bit. He was a friend of mine who was an MP in the Marine Corps, talked to him and said, gave him some ideas, and said, "Go out to Old Fort Parkway, stand on the side of Old Fort Parkway, and salute every car that goes by for an eight-hour shift. And if you still want to be an MP, call me back," because that's pretty much what being an MP is like. So he went in the Marine Corps, did some other stuff, and then got his four years and came home, and being a police officer is kind of what he's always wanted to do. So it's a, it's a, I'm proud that he has had, has wanted to do this, and has stuck with it, and driven enough to get to the point where he's at today, and I'm just proud that he's willing to serve. Also, one more personal item, January seventeenth, my mom and dad celebrate their fiftieth wedding anniversary. We will be celebrating this Saturday as a family and friends, but just wanted to say congratulations to my mom and dad, Mike and Doris Sullivan, fifty years. I was there, I was the best man. I was three years old, but I was the best man, so. I don't remember it, but I was there. So anyway, that's all I've got, and be safe this week as the weather rolls in.
I believe I'll have a slide to pop up here. Yes, a week or two ago, we had the opportunity to go out to the airport and wish John Black a happy retirement. The council was there for the most, and I know Mary Esther had a conflict with the meeting and wasn't able to be there, so I was able to give John his print of the Capticus Memorial Jet and read a proclamation for the crowd. On behalf of John, we wish him happy retirement after thirty-three years working in the airport. John's a good man. Couple other little things to the chief here, and Chief Bill, I'll say that. Chief, we appreciate your officers, all, your whole team, not just on, of course, January ninth, but all year long. Thank you for the job they do, and let them know this council appreciates them. Same with Chief Bill. Chief Bill seemed to be kind of excited a little bit yesterday while we were cutting the ribbon on Station Four, and if you haven't been out at Jefferson Pike and seen Station Four, it's probably one of the most beautiful fire halls you'll ever put eyes on. And we think, I think Mike Hollingshead with SRM Concrete donated that land so that we could save some money and do a nice hall. It's state-of-the-art, and we had a good time. Chief Bill, want to wish you all the best with your retirement. He's a fun guy, and we're going to miss him, so just want to make sure he knows that we care about him and love him. You may have something on this, Mayor, and if you do, I'm just going to mention it. Stewart Creek High School.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll let you do that one then, because they're going to need some support. Jerry, I know you mentioned a couple of funerals, and Dorothy Jean Barnett was one of those that I remembered that passed away a couple weeks ago, and Steve and Teresa Barnett, I don't know if they're watching, but our condolences to you and your family for the loss of DJ. To our employees, you heard tonight, we're looking at making sure that we always put our employees at the top of the, top of our wish list for making sure they're looked after and taken care of. I know at the employee luncheon that we did back, gosh, it seemed like it's been a month ago now, we actually told our employees, "You're the most valuable asset this town has, and we're always looking for ways to improve your livelihood and your incomes and things like that when we can." So I'm glad to hear that Jeff brought that presentation tonight, that Dave, you've met with Jeff, and that you're working on getting our percentiles up so we can hold on to our great people. Last, health, I heard you mentioned it, and boy, I've been under the weather last week, and I know a lot of people that have, so get well. Go get your meds and get well, because that stuff's tough. But anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
So a couple of items. Last month, Chief Irvin, Town Manager, Santucci and I enjoyed judging D.R. Horton's Christmas decoration contest. I will tell you, they were very creative. I did shoot the buck's eye out with an airsoft gun. One of the, one of the hallways had us looking for the buck, who was the guy with the hat on, and we had to shoot him with an airsoft gun, and I got him. But it was, they did a good job, so it's going to be hard to top next year. Congratulations to McDonald's and the Line Leadership Group on their recent grand opening. During the grand opening, the Line Leadership Group generously donated to Smyrna Fire Department and contributed to other local organizations. This is the new McDonald's that is on Sam Ridley Parkway. Smyrna High School student Aileen Fajardo was the winner of the Mayor for a Day, and it was a, it was a silent auction, and she actually bid on getting to be mayor for a day, and I had her join me at the GNRC Regional Council Body Meeting, and she actually was my proxy that day and got to vote on my behalf. And then she also attended the Senior Activity Center and the Rotary Club presentation, so we were glad that she was able to be with us. Mark, you talked about this a little bit, but congratulations to Stewart's Creek High School Band selected to perform in the sixtieth Presidential Inauguration Parade in Washington, DC on January the twentieth. They'll be representing the town of Smyrna, Rutherford County Schools, and the state of Tennessee. The Stewart's Creek High School Band will join select groups from across the nation for this historic occasion. Mr. Chester thought they may be the only Tennessee band. Do we know that for sure? Don't know. But they are needing to raise a hundred and twenty thousand dollars before January the twentieth to be able to make the trip, and so if you would like to contribute, you can visit supportschsband.com or stewartscreekband@gmail.com, and they would be happy to take your contribution.
They're pretty short of their collections right now, from what I'm hearing.
Oh, are they?
They need some money.
Okay. Raquel, I think you brought up our fire station open house, and it was a wonderful day yesterday as we celebrated the grand opening of our brand-new fire station, our sixth fire station, that will enhance our safety with fire department. Land donation from the Hollingsheads was two acres. The value of that property was seventy thousand eight hundred dollars. They also provided free blasting, earth removal, and grading work for the site, saving us approximately two hundred thousand dollars. The two-bay fire station is nine hundred, has a nine hundred square foot training room, eight bunk rooms, and a total building square footage of fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty square feet. It took four hundred and thirty-eight days to complete. The area of approximately forty-five hundred square feet is available for a future EMS building, and partly paid with our American Rescue Plan Act money. We had a grant for seven million one hundred and sixty-three thousand that helped partly pay for that, and the total project cost was ten million six hundred and ninety thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. So great time had by all, and we will be celebrating Chief on the thirty-first. Phew, marathon meeting tonight.
Boy, it was.
Anything else?
HG, let's wish him well.
Yes, HG is home recuperating from the flu. He said he was going to be watching, so I'm not sure if he did or not, but I'm sure he will critique us. Oh, that's right, and we'll, all of us will say what HG usually says.
Shop local.
Shop local and be kind.
I don't care about the be kind.
Oh, you don't care about the be kind?
The shop one.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, then we are adjourned.